Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday evening, April 10th, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have seventeen items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, March 27th, 2023.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion is made in second to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor, oppose, and meeting minutes are filed 11-0. Agenda Item Number Two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for a special permit from Attorney Sam Icannion on behalf of SUCIU LLC DBA Exella Storage to add additional storage units to a non-conforming storage facility located at 846 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside District. Order number 23-100-8823A.
Okay, this public hearing we've taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And then fourth, questions from the City Council. So we'll start the public hearing with the public speaking in favor. Please come on down and please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sam Icannion, Attorney with Law Office at 74 Main Street. I represent the petitioner Sutu LLC. That's an LLC name for my clients Jasmine Matthews and her husband Alexi Sutu. They, first of all, I want to thank Karen. As you know, she's a miracle worker with assisting us in the technical aspects of things. And the City Clerk's office for also assisting us with keeping within the bounds of the law in terms of filing a notice. Appreciate that. And appreciate just a little bit of your time to go over this proposal. This is 846-850, Boston Post Road. For those of you who have driven that road so many times, you'll probably recognize it as the property directly east of the old Halfway Cafe. It was originally a cane storage place. It consists of two lots, the smaller lot immediately to the right of the Halfway Cafe and the larger lot which houses most of this storage facility. It's in the Wayside District, so the storage facility is not allowed use anymore there. It's a pre-existing condition, pre-existing non-conforming use. So what happened here is that over the years where it was cane storage on the main parcel, the use of the storage facility has crept into the smaller parcel. Some of you might recognize this house. We've been driving by it for I don't know how many years. I guess this isn't working, but that's pretty easy to see. And the house is in really bad shape. My folks bought this place a couple of years ago. She is an emergency room physician. He has a history and background in the moving and storage business. So this is a mom-and-pop shop, not part of any corporate chain or anything. And they bought this thinking that maybe they would use this house to try to rehab it and get some rental income. Well, as you'll see, if you could flip the slides, the house is in really bad condition. It hasn't been lived in for several years. Now, this is also on 846. That's the current, as I said, some of the use has crept into this lot.
Sam, so if you drift away, the audience won't...
Sorry, my bad. Yep, gotcha. Gotcha. So this is the house. I think it's important to note, if you look down at this thing from 30,000 feet, there's very little of a decent argument that can be made, in my view, from a land planning or land use planning that this should be a residence. I mean, you have a restaurant, I guess there's going to be a Mexican restaurant there on one side, and you have a heavy storage facility on the other. It's not a place where I think you or I would want to live and not the highest and best use, given what's on the ground. Furthermore, if you look to the right of that, go back just one, Steve. Look to the right of that house, that's a wetlands area. And it was discovered that this property does not have a regular septic system. It's a cesspool. It's failed. To put a new septic system in would be cost prohibitive right near the wetlands area. And also, although it's not completely impervious, the soil there is compacted pretty hard. You should also know, just to sidetrack, we have been in front of the Conservation Commission for the proposal that we're going to show you. There was some question with the Building Department about whether we had to come here at all, but, so we did proceed with the conservation. And we paused that hearing because they wanted us to come here to get your approval before going any further. So Priscilla and her team are sitting on it right now, continuing it, meeting to meeting, until we can hopefully come back with a positive vote from this council. Okay, so just a couple of shots of the property. I mean, it's pretty bad. You can go to the next one. It would take, I mean, to get this livable, aside from the fact that we just don't think it's really a great place to live. Okay, thank you. Next one. All right, so this is what we're proposing. This is what you're seeing from, well, you can see from the Route 20, Boston Post Road. There is five storage, five units on top of five units on the same pad, on the same quote-unquote "foundation" as the existing structure. So this top level on the street, and I just drove by it today. Now, of course, I'm not sure if you're familiar, I think it's called Old Boston Post Road is how you get access, the one that goes down to the transfer station or to the dump, I guess. That goes down there, you would take a right to get into this building. And that would be from the back of this. This is the view from the street. There is a platform that you can access and a walkway going around, as you can see the beginning of it. And that's how you would access. There is a loading dock on that side. All right, next one, please. All right, and this is the shot from the entrance. The storage units on the left are already in place, and that is what we're proposing. It's a modest increase in the non-conformity. Units one to five are accessed via the gravel driveway on the first level, and then six and 10 are accessed through the loading dock. Next. You have in your packet a couple of blowups of the actual plan that's been done by our engineers. I thought I'd throw those in there to let you know, give you some good measurements. But as I mentioned, this is still with conservation. They have actually had a very good, a couple of meetings and some good give-and-take with Priscilla and her team, and I am very confident we're going to be able to satisfy them for this minimal increase. And one more? Okay, so that's what we're looking for. That's the basic lay of the land, as it were. No increase in the square footage of what's there now. I think we can turn what is probably pretty much an eyesore. Driven by this thing for my, it seems like my whole life, and I've always looked at the structure and wondered who the heck could live there. But it's actually gotten worse with the increase of the storage space. So we would hope that, obviously, you know, if there are any questions, we can entertain them, but in committee, if there's anything else we can provide, we could do that.
Thank you, Attorney Icannion. Are there any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Are there any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Please.
I'm just curious, what is the conservation...
Oh, I'm sorry. Name and address, please.
Robert Preciado, I live at 5 Spring Hill. I'm just curious what the conservation has said about the property and your modifications to it.
Yeah, I have not been part of those hearings. Our engineer has, so I couldn't exactly answer. But I do know there's been some give-and-take. There's been some plan modification and so forth. You know, it's, if you look at it, it's not the most attractive wetlands between, you probably have been down there, but between the restaurant and this site, it's like a swamp or something. But I know, I have a lot of confidence in Priscilla Ryder and the conservation, but I have not been part of those discussions.
If you're interested, the conservation meeting is April 20th at 7:00, where this will be on the agenda.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Harmony Larson. I live at 173 Barnard Road. In the rendering, it looks like you have kind of like big metal bins that a tractor-trailer might haul. Are they movable? Are they permanent? Are they going to be, are they going to look like they blend in with the other units on the site?
Yeah, they're designed to not be moved back. They're not, I mean, they can be moved, but they're not designed to be, you know, for someone moving, if you will. So they're going to be staying there.
And that's how they're going to look, like a tractor-trailer box dumped?
Yeah, I wouldn't characterize that way, but that's what they're going to look like, yeah.
Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Seeing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the City Council? Counsel Dumas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I got a couple of questions. First, as you say, you drive by it, I come up to Sensile Boulevard all the time, and I look at it straight on, so I know the property very well. And yes, it's been slowly deteriorating over time. Those are effectively shipping containers, right, that you're dropping in there?
Yeah, I believe so. I can, Alexi, can you come on up here for a second, just in case I might have to defer to the experts?
I mean, that's why they look like trailers, because they're shipping containers, you know? And I know this is a common way to do storage, but they're shipping containers, right?
Yes, shipping containers.
Name and address.
My name is Alex, 10 Sherbrooke Drive, Dover, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
So they're shipping containers, okay.
Yes, and they match the color, so like all blend together.
Yep, yeah. I think, you know, as far as the wetlands next to it, they start across the street, across Route 20 from that as well, so I know that part of it very well, too, because that's in my neighborhood. But I think this, if it's done right, it can be an improvement to the property and not replacing an eyesore with another one. I'd like to see some sort of, you know, blockage, abrevieties or something.
That's probably a good idea. Something we can work on in committee. I think that's a great idea.
Exactly, yeah. I don't consider that to be a showstopper. It's something that needs to get negotiated, so, you know, if it's something that people drive by and people don't notice it, I'm fine with that, too, so.
That was proposed by the wetlands.
Okay. Yeah, in fact, in fact, you know, it's hard to tell from the rendering, but as you know, it's almost like only half the house you can see currently. But that would be a really good idea. That's something we'll deal with in committee.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dumas. Counsel Wagner.
Thank you. I'm having a hard time understanding access to the, if you could explain access to the...
Well, Alexi will point it out where you get access.
I get the gravel driveway and what, where is, it looks like grass and Route 20, so people can't stop on Route 20.
The access is through, from 846.
Old Boston.
From the level.
Old Boston.
So one level will be from the street level, from that gravel, and there will be an access point.
That's what I'm trying to understand, so...
So that is the access point that will...
Excuse me, you got to use the microphone so the folks at home can...
But how did, so the car is in this driveway area and they have to walk up the steps? So if somebody's putting like stuff from their house, they have to carry it up the steps?
This will be a loading dock. This will be, that will be a loading dock for trucks to access.
It'll be a loading.
That will be the same level, that'll be the same level for trucks.
Counsel Oram, help me, what's the name of the street again? Old Boston Post Road?
Old Boston Post Road.
Old Boston Post Road.
Yeah, yeah.
And that enters...
You need to use the mic, too.
You can detach the mic, though.
Oh, that would be all. Yeah, so that enters here, that's where the driveway is, but your point is, yeah, there is a loading dock, yeah.
That's the part that's just concerning me. I wouldn't want people to think they could see it, how it's designed.
Jump up, yeah, right.
Stop on Route 20 and jump out to something and...
Right, right. Yeah, you can't access from Route 20.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Wagner. Counsel Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation. I had a question, I guess, on the image from the front of the new design with the person, that image. I was curious, like, how close...
That's Counsel Oram. I told him earlier that that was...
Thank you.
Yeah, similar to what was brought up before, I am concerned with its proximity to Boston Post Road. I know this is probably not a correct rendering of how close it might be, but definitely in committee, it'd be important to know what that setback is, because it does feel like if people are accessing it from that direction, it almost feels like it should be reversed, that you would access it from the other side. So I would just be thoughtful about that as you work with conservation. Obviously, we want to take care of the wetlands, but also making sure that it's safe, because if it was a residential property, which, as you've shown in the images, is, you know, in disarray and really would need repairs to be utilized, this does seem like a use that could fit, particularly given the existing units, but I would be concerned about the access point. So that's just something to consider as you move forward.
Thank you. Good, and also, I would also refer you to those actual plans that do show setbacks and so forth, but that's a good point. I mean, it's unbelievable to think that the actual front door of this house is on Route 20.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Perlman. Counsel Oram.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Icannion, I'm going to give you a hard time now. No, I won't, I won't. But honestly, to the front, right there, stay right on that. What prevents a car, you know, it's not going to be easy to get to the second level of these storage units. You've got to walk with materials in your hand. What would prevent someone from driving their car to the front? Because I don't see any barriers between Route 20 and the storage trailers. I mean, I...
Yeah, I'd encourage you to take a ride down. I'll do the same thing. I mean, I think the slope is not even doable. I mean, if you look at it, you'll see, like I said, I mean, how in the world could this be a front entrance? I mean, no one would ever use it, but it's something we can address. I think your point is well-taken.
Any everybody's with those being put in to prevent that, do you know?
I think that would help.
Yeah, that...
Certainly would shade.
Yeah, not just shade, but keep...
My other client is raising him, but you have to come up here to answer, Justine, Dr. Matthews, I should say.
Just to prevent any safety issues?
Yeah.
From cars pulling off Route 20 and say, "Oh, we'll just pull off on the grass." You know, put the stuff in the storage unit and leave.
Hi, I'm Jasmine Matthews, Alexi's wife. We live at 10 Sherbrooke Drive in Dover. I was at the conservation meeting, so I can answer some of these tree and like shrubbery questions, but essentially, they felt very positively about this. They did question, you know, the proximity to the wetlands and what we would do to make it a little bit more sightly. And the discussion also, there are some trees that are dead that would have to be taken care of. And so again, things that the conservation was dealing with, but what they were talking about is that we would be replacing whatever trees are coming out, and then also to protect Route 20, we would be putting trees and shrubbery and all the things to kind of block and make it a little bit more sightly, but also in light of the conservation needs. So I think that that will be addressed again later this month, but it's been kind of an active discussion in terms of what we're putting, where, how many, and so.
And again, I don't know if you heard, my concern is that cars pull off Route 20, make a quick visit, move along, and that's what I want to make sure. There's something in place to prevent that.
To prevent that, yeah.
There'll be no, there'll be no ability to access this unless you are a drive-through major abreviate.
And we can discuss that. I was even thinking a guardrail or something.
Right, right.
Again, that can be discussed.
Okay.
Presumably Urban Affairs? That can be discussed later. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Oram.
Thank you.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. My concern is always curb appeal. And I'll be honest, Sam, I don't find it those too attractive. First of all, the units themselves, you can tell they're units that would come off a containment ship coming into Boston Harbor. Is that what you're going with, that style, that type?
Well, it's yet to be determined, Counsel Landers. I mean, these are samples. I think color and design can be adjusted to, I mean, it'll be, it'll be a little more, this is a rendering that we hired to have done, so this is going to have to be hammered out in committee.
Yeah, I think design, color, and then as the doctor mentioned, trees, shrubberies, and stuff like that. You know, it is the entrance to our city.
Right.
And right now, it looks like construction site was trying to get going. They dumped these 10 containers there, dropped them, and put God knows what inside. So I find no curb appeal there, and it is...
Whatever we do will be an improvement over what's...
You know, it's only a half mile from into our city, and I think, because there are a lot of storage units around, and I have to admit, some of them don't look bad.
Right.
You know, I think if you worked on that for not big bucks, I think you could, you know, do it.
I think we're committed to making it better than what's there now.
Well, that's true, too, but we want it really good.
Okay.
Thank you, Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do your clients own the Exella that's next door to this lot?
Yes.
Okay, so in my looking at all of this information on the GIS map, it looks to me like the storage that is currently behind the existing house is abutting onto city property, as is one of the other storage containers on the other lot. Was this discussed in conservation at all?
Yeah, that's yet to be determined, but it is something, you know, I didn't really do any of the title work on this, but it is something we saw and we have some concern about, but it shouldn't affect this particular proposal.
Okay, so as I was looking, because there's nothing that says you can't, I drove into the Exella driveway of the existing, the property next door. You can actually drive that around the back of that building and get to this property as another way to get there versus coming in off of 20 on the entrance to the city transfer station.
Yes, yes.
So I guess for me, I'm certainly in agreement that this does not have curb appeal. And just for my counselors, this is in Urban Affairs, but I will remind you all, this is a pre-existing non-conforming site. We do not have to do anything with it if we choose not to. We specifically changed the zoning so that storage units could not be in this area. Unfortunately, one exists, so I'll leave it at that. If it isn't urban, then we will set up something. I was hoping to have conservation's information before. I took it up with conservation, I mean, in Urban Affairs, so I will have to talk to counselors and discuss that.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Any other questions from the counselors? Any other questions from the counselors? Any other questions from the counselors? I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you. Agenda Item Number Three.
Communication from the mayor regarding a veto of City Council Order 2223-100-8721C, Ordinance Amendments to Chapter 650, zoning relative to certain provisions concerning mixed use and affordable housing.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to refer this to Urban Affairs.
And lay the veto on the table till our next meeting.
I understand it has to lay on the table anyway.
Okay. Motion made in second to refer to Urban Affairs, and we'll be taking this up at our next meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Urban Affairs 11-0. Agenda Item Number Four.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request totaling $748,290 for economic development to MEDC funding for the fiscal year 2024 operating budget for MEDC and the Economic Development Toolbox.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion made in second to refer to the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Finance 11-0. Agenda Item Number Five.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $393,854.64 from PEG Funds to Marlboro Cable Trust to fund the operation of WMCT-TV for fiscal year 2024.
Counselors, I have filed the Appearance of Conflict of Interest Form as my wife works on the cable trust, and that's all in your hands, and I feel based on that I have the ability to participate. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion made in second to refer to the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Finance 11-0. Agenda Item Number Six.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Joseph Delginio to the Fort Meadow Commission for a three-year term to expire on September 27th, 2025, replacing Lee Thompson.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to Personnel.
Motion made in second to refer to the Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Personnel 11-0. Agenda Item Number Seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Paul Gould to the Fort Meadow Commission for a three-year term to expire in February 24th, 2026.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to Personnel as well.
Motion made in second to refer to the Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Personnel 11-0. Agenda Item Number Eight.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the application for site plan approval from Attorney Falk on behalf of JW Capital Partners LLC to build a mixed-use project at 57 Main Street in the Marlboro Village District in proper legal form, Order Number 2223-100-8694C.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor and move the site plan to Item Number 17.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor and move this item down to Number 17. Any discussion, oh, yes, Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be abstaining from this vote.
We'll let the record reflect that Counsel Dumas will be abstaining from this particular item. So again, this will be going, solicitors' correspondence, we accept it and place on file, we move this down to Agenda Item Number 17. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Item 17 and filing Solicitor's communication 10-0. One abstaining. Agenda Item Number Nine.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jeremy McManus regarding the application for a special permit from Stephen Copper on behalf of Alliance Health and Human Services to renovate 10,490 square feet of an existing building to provide 12 additional rest home beds at 720 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside Zoning District in proper legal form, Order Number 2223-100-8768B.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So again, move the communication from Assistant City Solicitor, accept and place on file, this communication, and move the application for a special permit to Number 16.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the Assistant City Solicitor's communication and move this item down to Agenda Item 16. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is going to Item 16 and filing the communication from the solicitor 11-0. Agenda Item Number Ten.
Communication from Assistant Building Commissioner William Payton regarding the request for approval for replacement of two flat wall signs, Mobile Station 656 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside District.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So these are in the Wayside, so the council is the approving authority. Unless there's an objection, I'm going to move to approve. We have, within the packet, one is called SP 2235 and one is SP 2236. So one is located on the longer side of the canopy, simply changing out the gas station type, and one's located on the shorter side of the canopy. Both are replacements. I move to approve.
Motion made second to approve the sign application. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the sign application is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 11.
Communication from Assistant Building Commissioner William Payton regarding the request for approval of two flat wall signs from Osaka at 58 Apex Drive, Unit A, within the Hospitality and Recreation Mixed Use Overlay District.
Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. So again, these are within Apex. They are replacements for a business that's changing hands. We have a communication, SP 2320 and SP 2321. 20 is on the east wall by the front entrance. 21 is on the south wall facing Route 20. I move to approve the signs.
Motion made second to approve the sign application. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the sign application is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 12.
Public input regarding the application for site plan approval from Attorney Falk on behalf of JW Capital Partners LLC to build a mixed-use project at 57 Main Street in the Marlboro Village District, Order Number 2223-108649C.
Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank the public for reaching out. We have 14 specified communications on the agenda. I know two more were received after this one, and I think one today. I don't know if they can be added or if they'll be on a next agenda, but I've moved to accept and place on file the communications.
Motion made second to accept and place on file the communications. Any discussion on the motion? You don't have to worry about this one. Any discussion on the motion? Are those in favor? Opposed, it carries to be filed, 10-0. Thirteen.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made second to accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the minutes are filed, 11-0. Claims.
Mr. President.
Council Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer the claims to the Legal Department.
Motion made second to refer the claims to the Legal Department. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the claims are going to Illegal, 11-0. Reports of Committees. Any reports of Committees? Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will report that there is an Urban Affairs Committee meeting set up for tomorrow. We will take up the mayor's order of the veto, and I thank the city clerk for adding it in on time.
Thank you, Council Robie. Any other reports of Committees? Seeing none, Agenda Item 15.
Order that the City Council Urban Affairs Committee review the proposed amendments to Chapter 650 zoning relative to Section 17 Table of Use Regulation and Section 34 Marlboro Village District. The text of the proposed changes were included in the packet and were submitted by Council Robie.
Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, in the packet, and the language is rather lengthy, so I appreciate that it was put that way. I took some time to think about this, but I know there may be others who have some changes that they may recommend or just want to have a discussion. So my thought was rather than having this be referred to Urban, referred to the Planning Board and advertised, it'd simply be referred to Urban Affairs Committee. We can have a discussion, come to an agreement, and then hopefully move that to the solicitor to be put in proper form and then go through the stages from there. So for now, I'm going to move to refer this to Urban Affairs.
Motion made second to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just have one question as far as procedure goes. Is there any clock associated with this? Okay, I just wanted to be clear of that, that's all. Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Again, on the motion to refer to Urban Affairs, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Urban Affairs, 11-0. Agenda item 16.
Order Number 2223-108768B, Application for a Special Permit from Stephen Copper on behalf of Alliance Health and Human Services to renovate 10,490 square feet of an existing building to provide 12 additional rest home beds at 720 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside Zoning District. Recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve.
Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee for the special permit.
Motion's made and seconded to move the recommendation. I will have the clerk read the conditions.
The City Council pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and the zoning ordinance of the city of Marlboro hereby grants the applicant a special permit to expand the pre-existing, non-conforming, convalescent home, nursing home use at the site as shown in the plans filed, subject to the following conditions, which conditions shall be binding on the applicant and successors and/or assigns. One, construction in accordance with applicable laws. Construction at the site is to be in accordance with all applicable building codes and zoning regulations in effect in the city of Marlboro and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Two, future site changes. Future changes to the exterior of the building or the site shall be subject to site plan review. Three, incorporation of submission. All plans, photo rendering, site evaluations, briefs, and other documentation provided by the applicant as part of the application and as amended or revised during the application hearing process before the City Council and/or the City Council's Urban Affairs Committee are here and incorporated into and become part of this special permit and become conditions or requirements of the same unless otherwise altered by the City Council. Four, operations. Operations will be continuous as the use at the site will be 24 hours a day each day of the year. Five, staffing. As a skilled nursing facility licensed by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the applicant will maintain the required staffing levels for all licensed beds, including the additional 12 rest home beds. The applicant will maintain staffing levels as needed to care for the new rest home residents and maintain its DPH licensure. Six, lighting. Exterior lighting at the site shall remain unchanged by this renovation. Seven, signs. Signs that the site shall comply with the city's sign ordinance. Eight, noise and air quality. The applicant shall comply with the city's noise ordinance, excuse me, and shall comply with all state and federal requirements governing air quality and emissions. Nine, recording of decision. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the applicant and successors and/or assigns at its expense shall record this special permit in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds after the city clerk has certified that the 20-day period for appealing this special permit has elapsed, no appeal having been filed, and before the applicant has applied to the building commissioner for a building permit. Upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of the recorded special permit to the City Council Office, the Building Department, and the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right, counselors, you've heard the conditions. The item to approve the special permit has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the special permit? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Robie.
Yes.
Council Dusset.
Yes.
Council Navin.
Yes.
Council Wagner.
Yes.
Council Irish.
Yes.
Council Ossing.
Yes.
Council Orum.
Yes.
Council Landers.
Yes.
Council Pearlman.
Yes.
Council Brown.
Yes.
And Council Dumas.
Yes.
Eleven yeas. The special permit for the Mariesta Healthcare Facility is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 17.
Order Number 2223-108694C, Application for Site Plan Review, excuse me, from Attorney Falk on behalf of JW Capital Partners LLC to build a mixed-use project at 57 Main Street in the Marlboro Village District. Recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve.
Council Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I need to recuse myself from the vote, and I just want some clarification as to why. My family owns, immediate family owns the property that abuts this property, so it would be a direct conflict of interest for either financial gain or financial loss for my family. So that's why I need to recuse myself from this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dumas. Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee, which is to approve.
Move recommendation by the Urban Affairs, which is to approve. Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. You all have a copy of something I'm going to present. I know this matter has been stressful for all of us. I know it has been for me. And talking to Mr. President, I know it's been stressful for him. As a counselor who is a member of the Urban Affairs Committee and voted no on this approval, I don't have a magic ball. I don't know how the vote's going to go tonight or if the site plan is denied, if we would face another lawsuit. In committee, the applicant was asked why they are proposing 99 units and not less. And their response was it's not financially feasible to do less. At the last Urban Affairs Committee meeting, we discussed again having another meeting to allow the applicant to see if they could reduce the number of units. And again, they stated they could not do it financially. While some counselors stated they liked the design of the building, some thought it was too big for the site. As chair of the committee, I feel responsible for the lack of discussion on the design itself and whether it really did meet the purpose envisioned that is reflected in the language of 65034 Marlboro Village District. While I considered amendments that would decrease the number of units after conferring with the solicitor, I am instead offering the following amendments. And if you will indulge me, they're simple, but I would like to read them. Site plan approval, final conditions. In Section A, insert a new language as the new paragraph one and renumber one and two to two and three. So the final plans would read, "Prior to endorsement of the site plans, the applicant must provide a final set of revised site plans to reflect the following conditions in the site plan approval." B3, G1A and G2. "The plans shall be reviewed for accuracy and conformance with the site plan approval with the conditions by the Site Pen Review Committee and attached heretofore as Exhibit A." In Section B, "Prior to issuance of a building permit, insert a new number three, Design Standards, and renumber three and four as appropriate." Number three would read, "The building plans shall show compliance with Section 65034A Purpose and Vision for development that is compatible with the character of downtown Marlboro and Section 65034D Design Standards, noting the purpose of the Design Standards is to promote quality development, emphasizing the city's sense of history, with new buildings reflecting the preference for moderate-scale structures that are in harmony with the existing historic brick structures while incorporating green building techniques." Number G, "Prior to issuance of the Certificate of Occupancy, insert a new 1A after the sentence beginning with minor amendments." It would read, "Notwithstanding any of the above, applicant shall provide at a minimum 60 parking spaces on-site. Payment in lieu to be adjusted accordingly." And in G2, "Offsite Parking", insert at the end of the current language the following sentence. "Applicants shall not seek to use the city-owned Bolton Street Lot for residential parking." So I would like to explain what at least I envision having a minimum of 60 parking spaces on-site would do. I think we all had in our discussion the document from Council Ossing that compared different sites with different numbers of units and different parking. So in my opinion at least, by having them have to have a minimum of 60 parking spaces on-site, it's clear to me that they would need to redesign and reduce the number of units to fit the 60 parking spaces. I did want to emphasize to the council and to let the public know that we had received a document from the solicitor that was sent to us on April 4, unfortunately after we had had all of our discussion. And I do want to cite one of the cases that caused me to reflect on the site plan's language. "It is within a board's discretion to impose reasonable conditions under a bylaws requirements in connection with approval of a site plan, even if the conditions are objected to by the owner or are the cause of added expense to the owner." And these were cases that the solicitor had found that went through the appellate court. So I think we have good standing to, even though the petitioner is saying it's not feasible, that we can put conditions that we want. So I hope that there is a second on this and there can be discussion. Thank you.
Is there a second on the amendment? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I will second Council Robie's proposal. I think it's worth the conversation to include that. I also, I found myself going to some old areas that used to live on the South Shore, Holbrook and Randolph. And there's some big housing boom going up there. And it's amazing to see, you know, we see the photographs here, and I'm seeing the stuff being built up there. And the one thing I think what's important that I appreciated what Council Robie put up is that the Design Standards actually fit better with the city downtown. And the current design, while elegant, doesn't necessarily fit that style. We've had that conversation prior with Woo-Hoo, you know, the ones that were there before. So I think that would also be good. I think these are valid points to add. I'll confess it's late in the game, but I think, I'm not sure how the votes would go, but if this gets it over the line, it's fine with me, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Council Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the effort put into this. I'd like, what's missing for me now is if this was, if the applicant was to look at this now redesigned, what we've been told several times is it would mean retail would go away. So what I'm struggling with, and which is why I supported this, is this body, not necessarily people sitting here now, but this body has put a lot of time into and made statements how we want a vibrant downtown. And I think that means different things to different people. But when, but I'm concerned of when projects are proposed, we want them somehow magically to make downtown vibrant, but there's no people or no cars, and nothing's actually going to change that's going to change how anybody's living downtown. So I'm having a problem with that. The way this is written, retail would have to go away. Maybe they'd have a floor of, somehow get a floor above, since I think going, my understanding is digging down isn't going to work. I don't really understand what it is we're trying to accomplish. And then I think it's very frenetic. And then we want this reminiscent construction that reminds us of the quaint 1890s, but that, those buildings and style don't meet the demands of today and the type of efficiency and green buildings and tight envelope that we want and reflecting in today's reality of the expense of building materials. So I feel like we want a lot of conflicting things, which is fine, then let's be honest and say we don't know what we really want and what's really feasible downtown, and let's go back to the drawing board. But I, the reason why I supported this is because a lot of time was put into saying, this is what we want downtown. We got a project that matches it, and then we say, no, no, and we don't actually want that. So that's what I'm struggling with. And this is great, but to me, this now removes any retail that's going to be on-site, so it's just another apartment building. And how does that work with the whole vibrant mixed-use vision we have for downtown?
Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Wagner. Council Robie.
May I do a point of order? If there is no retail and nothing else, but it is strictly an apartment building, but it is strictly an apartment building, it has to come back to the City Council as a special permit. It's only mixed-use that is allowed to come to us, current, current rules of the zoning as a site plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Robie. Any other comments from the counselors? Counsel Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this full body has put a lot of work into this. And going back to 650, Chapter 650A, 650-34A, those important words are they are compatible with the character of downtown Marlboro. And I don't think this building's compatible. And I feel the motion being made, the amendments are reasonable. You look at a restaurant down there. I just heard from someone that they couldn't even get down into Funky Murphy's this past weekend. So you put another restaurant down there. Where are they going to park, you know? And again, what's it going to do to the neighborhood? Are they going to see cars all over their streets? Because people always use least resistance. I brought that up earlier when we were discussing the storage sheds. They'll probably drive right up front. Well, same here. People will probably use whatever's the least resistant way of getting close to the restaurant. And that's just human nature. So I don't think projecting or proposing, I'm sorry, proposing to not have the restaurant is critical. And again, I know the Chair of Urban Affairs tried her best to negotiate with the applicant and they wouldn't budge. At least we're trying to negotiate something that may work. But again, I don't think it's going to work unless the restaurant goes because I, I personally was not going to vote for this no matter what. But looking at the parking, trying to be fair of what we did for other developments downtown, that's within reason. Remember, this is 126 bedrooms. There are two-unit facilities, 126. Multiply it up and you'll see it. You have two-bedroom units and one-bedroom units, the studios. That's a lot of bedrooms. To propose the amount of parking of 26 plus the other two is, in my view, abuse of what we have to try to promote the downtown Marlboro. And this does not promote the downtown Marlboro in any way I can see with parking, with the fact that the building is a very large building. It would look great in Boston. I've been driving in Boston a lot the past month and it would look great there. But I don't think it has the character of this city. And the other thing I just wanted to note, within our Marlboro Village District zoning regulations, we can hire a qualified professional consultant. And if it gets to that point, I think that would be better than maybe, and negotiate with the client, if the client so wishes to negotiate. But from what I've seen so far going to the meetings, the client doesn't wish to negotiate. So I will not vote for this if these amendments put together by Counsel Robie is not approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Are there any other counselors? Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. For me, if this, if this development was going to move forward as proposed, I would not be able to support it as proposed. It keeps kind of going back to a safety issue for me with the early ed center that's right there. And I can just picture people vying for parking spaces. There would be families and children trying to get from the parking lot and across the street. It just, beyond what other people had mentioned, that was something that really stuck out for me. And the other thing is that I just simply didn't feel like it was a good fit for that area. I do want to see development. I, I do want to see residential. I do want to see commercial. I just want to do it in a smart way that is going to be a good fit for the community, for the residents and the people who already work here.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Counsel Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think probably for the benefit of this council, I am getting over a cold and so as I would like to talk as much as possible on this one because I've got a lot to say. I think for everyone's benefit, it may limit me. So if you permit me. I think my feelings on this have been pretty much explained during the urban meetings, but I do want to talk a little bit about this. Parking for me is, is the number one issue because Ward 6 is going to be directly impacted by this. When the downtown district was created, you know, there were some changes made to encourage development. And I think it's important that we do encourage development. And so some of these developments that have, have been proposed that special permits have been granted to have not provided all the required parking. But they have required, they have provided a significant amount of the required parking. As we mentioned, when this was in urban, 28 South Bolton Street, which is the Maryland Green property, which was recently torn down, they're going to provide 67% of the required parking spaces that they need to have on-site. Eon Main, which is the giant hole in the ground on Main Street, which a special permit was granted for. And this council worked very hard to help them get a special permit to build a project that was appealing, which is still a giant hole in the ground. They were going to provide 65% of the required parking spaces. The original 57 Main Street, the Tavern on the Green project that the council, prior council overwhelmingly approved, provided 143% of the required parking spaces. This new project, just 32% of the required parking spaces. With the reduction that they can have, the 10% reduction for the zipcar space, that number goes up to a whopping 35% of the required parking spaces. And this matters not because of, you know, the fact that we want people to have less cars or we want to become a city where it's easier to get around without cars, but it's going to have a direct impact on the abutting neighborhood. You know, where are the people who are going to live at this very nice, very expensive building that we've heard all about, going to park? Well, if, if I were living there, I would park in the very closest parking lot, which is 55 Bolton Street. A parking lot that was built when this city allocated funds to tear down, to purchase homes, tear them down and then construct a parking lot for residents of the entire city to use. There are not enough parking spaces just in that lot for the residents in this building to use. They would still need additional parking. And this matters and people may be listening to this and say, geez, I drive down Bolton Street every day. That parking lot is empty. I would very much encourage someone to drive by at 8:30 in the morning or 3 o'clock in the afternoon every day when parents are dropping their children off. This area has always had a difficult time with parking. And before that lot was there, residents and parents parked on Rice Street. They parked on Francis Street. They parked on Washington Street to drop their kids off. I find it very concerning that all of a sudden, if we are back to that because people are parking in that lot overnight and all night, or all day, because they have flexible work schedules, which we all, which we all have, it is no longer easy to predict when people are going to be in those parking spaces. I'm very concerned that cars are going to be lined up on those streets again and parents are going to be letting their kids out or kids are going to be coming out of the Freeman School and they're going to be in some sort of dangerous public safety predicament. I cannot see that happen. Furthermore, you know, we're always told we have plenty of parking downtown and that parking is getting harder and harder to find. And that's a good thing. This city, MEDC, and all its partners have been working very hard to program the heck out of downtown Marlboro and it's working. Things are more vibrant. People come down for the Food Truck Festival. People come down for the Thursday concerts. People come down for the Christmas tree lighting, the farmer's market. There's a new pop-up going up in the parking lot at, you know, where Crown Fried Chicken is. There are tons of things driving people downtown. But when they get here, they should have a place to park. I wish they didn't have to take a car to get here, but this is the type of city we have. We do not have a public transportation system that you can get to without driving. If you live there, you can't, and you can, but I find it highly unlikely that Uber and the W, the MWRTA is going to solve these problems. So I have a real concern about where this parking and this lack of parking is going to lead us. I do want to say a little bit more about the design aspect because, you know, Counsel Robie has brought this up. I, I think she's hit the nail on the head. The design aspect of this project, I think, needs to be considered, both the size and the design. The prior proposed building was a nice-looking brick building. It fit in with the exterior of other places downtown. It provided a continuance. One of the reasons that I wanted to see a nice development at this parcel is so that people will not stop their downtown journey right at Bolton Street, but they continue across. As it is now, I am concerned that that is going to continue. And so when you look at this building as proposed, it is a giant closed-off brick building whereas the prior development kind of terraced as it went up and it got a little, the footprint got smaller as you went up. Not only does that provide a more inviting look, but it also is going to reduce the shadows that are going to come for the first part of the day as the sun rises up on the east side of the building and is going to keep a shadow on the common even longer. And then if you come around the other side, and I was sitting at Kaleri Square last week, looking up Maple Street across East Main and all the way down Main Street. And you could see just the little bit corner of the row building. And I started thinking, okay, well now all of a sudden, you're not going to be able to see that part of the common that's on the other side of it. You're not going to be able to see the old central fire station because that is now going to be a squared-off, large building. So I have a real concern about how that's going to end up looking. You know, I had an opportunity to be on Broadway in Everett last week and I was sitting quite a bit of traffic. And Broadway in Everett is, has some of the similar qualities that we have where it has, you know, to our downtown area, there are single-family homes, there are multifamily homes. There are brick churches, there's a city hall. And, you know, they all kind of work together. And then at the top of the hill, as I was still sitting in traffic, I was on Broadway for like 25 minutes. I'm looking at this giant, giant building at the top of the hill and I was like, oh, that kind of looks out of place. It's a nice-looking building, but it's kind of out of place. And I laughed to myself because there was a little voice in my head, you know, said, oh, you're in Everett. And I realized that we had been provided with similar properties that the developer had built in similar communities. And that happened to be the building that was sitting at the top of the hill and it was 600 Broadway in Everett. A very nice-looking building, a little bit out of context with the neighborhood, you know, and it just kind of continued to give me more of a concern. So I would like a building that is going to look like it does in our area. And then finally, I just want to, I guess the laryngitis wasn't that bad. I do just want to say, you know, a lot has been said about this city needs to present a more positive economic development outlook and that this council needs to work harder, you know, or that this could provide a negative connotation for, for how we are in economic development. This city council has worked very, very hard to provide economic development opportunities and we do so in a thoughtful manner. You know, just, you know, in the past four years since I've been on the council, you know, we approved a special permit for 276 residential units at the corner of Lincoln Mechanic, which is going to have a huge, is going to unlock huge potential for that corridor. 276 residential units, which by the way, are going to provide 448 parking spaces. We approved a special permit for 12 units of 272 Lincoln Street, which is going to provide 20 parking spaces. We extended the site plan for 28 South Bolton to help make sure that that project gets done. And it's not just building developments because this council has also approved three TIFs for BJ's, Physic Instruments, and Solomedics to ensure that businesses know that they have a friendly place to come and do business in the city of Marlboro, that we want their employees, that we want their business to succeed here. So to, you know, to say, it's a bit of a false choice to say that if we don't approve this, we're going to start scaring off development. Do not believe this. This is a city where people want to be. We want them here. But we work on economic development for the residents of this city. We walk on it to make sure that it's a fair tax base. But just making a fair tax base for them at the expense of their quality of life, of the residents and the businesses is not something that we should be doing. Kate, excuse me, Counsel Robie, I want to commend you for trying to find a way forward that will help to do these. If, you know, the, the amendment can move forward, I think, you know, it's, it's helpful. I don't think that I can support. And I can support any kind of movement towards something that's a little bit better. But at the end of the day, on a final vote, I'm just not sure I can support this project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Navin. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Going over and listening and seeing in urban, I don't believe the votes would be here this evening. So I definitely would support Counsel Robie's amendment to this. In the beginning, in urban, I didn't like the architectural design of this project to fit into the, into the Marlboro Village District zoning. A lot of work has gone into this. So I definitely would be supporting Counsel Robie's amendment tonight. And Counsel Navin is correct. We want to attract businesses in here and I think this is a possibility to save this project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Irish. Counsel Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to every resident who's reached out to the council and for all of my colleagues who have spoken. I share a lot of the same concerns that have been brought up. First of all, you know, I think when we think about development in this particular project, I really ask myself, development for who? A lot of the folks who might be coming in here would be new residents, which is exciting. And I'm sure many of us have lived in developments that are new and that's how we were able to come into this city. And, you know, it's a positive thing. But I think it's at a detriment to a lot of people in the neighborhood and in the larger community. We know that the parking is a huge issue. Obviously, the number of units as compared to the number of parking spaces really leaves a lot to be desired for what would be necessary. We talk about the 128 bedrooms. That doesn't mean 128 people. And we need to be cognizant that people are going to be living multiple families in these one-bedrooms. And even, you know, if it's going to be priced at the market value, that's going to be very expensive and people have to make a certain salary to be able to live in those units and they're going to bring a vehicle. And I think to say otherwise ignores the real issue that we need a large-scale plan in terms of what parking looks like in this city across the lots that we already have, across these new developments. I know Counsel Robie has done a lot of work to try to change what we have, you know, in the actual language so that, you know, whether it's, you know, we need more money per parking space or that they're actually going to require the certain amount, I think that that's really important. But at the end of the day, that is a systemic problem that just approving projects will not address. And I'm also quite concerned particularly because of some of the things that residents had shared. There was a line in one of the letters that really stuck out to me. We have too long neglected our city's infrastructure while allowing huge housing developments to pop up all over the place. I know some of these projects haven't happened and that not, has not been because the council hasn't wanted it, right? We've put forth projects, we've had the special permits, the site plan review, and we've wanted to have the projects come forward. And unfortunately, some of them haven't. But the ones that we have approved, we can see around the city, there's a lot of development happening, particularly in the downtown area. And I'm very concerned that suddenly all this housing is going to be built and how are we going to mitigate that? You know, safety was talked about, you know, the early childhood center that's right down the street. I used to live on Washington Street at one point and people used to park all over in front of my house or, you know, block my driveway. And it was very difficult, you know, to even be able to cross that Bolton Street intersection. So I think when I'm thinking about this project, I'm understanding it's not just a decision about one project. We have to know what is the impact on the whole neighborhood. And because these other projects are happening, it was discussed, where are people going to park? Where are they going to go? You know, I'd love to live in a world where the public transit in Marlboro is really effective. And, you know, I'm a proud rider of the shuttle at one point where I was able to experience what that would be like to, it was really important for me to have door-to-door service to Boston without having to really utilize my car. And until we build that program out more, we can't ask people, you know, to be able to say, hey, come to Marlboro, you don't need a vehicle. And then, you know, I see people walking on Route 20, right, with their groceries because they don't have, maybe they don't have a car, but they aren't able to get on the public transit because we don't have enough of it. So I think that all of these pieces are so interrelated that I can't support this project, not just because of the parking, but I just do not think it fits with the character of the downtown neighborhood. And I think we really need to ask ourselves, what are the types of things we want in this community? And relooking at the Marlboro Downtown Village District and understanding how we can set better guidelines that actually align with what this council at this time is interested in. So I'm not in support of the project and thank you, Mr. President, for the time.
Thank you, Counsel Perlman. Anyone else? Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure where to start. Basically, you know, I thought over the last few years, I know I was quite excited about getting mixed-use downstairs, downtown, getting activity downtown. I thought that's what we wanted. But I guess I'm going to throw a question out. When you don't want this project, what's going to happen to the other two projects? I think they're going to go away or they're not going to, we're not going to end up with what we want. We got E on the main. I'm not sure if that's ever going to make it. We get the green property. You got this one. I walked in tonight and one of my former students, I said, what do you want there? What do you want the road party? She's very content with a three-decker, you know, a three-unit apartment complex. Is that what we want there? I don't think so. It doesn't do much for us. So I think, and I'm not going to put you guys in the spot, but I'd like to know what you want in these three, in these three classes. Or do you just want to forget about them? You know, it's fine. We have this 242 units on Semirano Drive. We got another, what, 244 coming? Those are easy. But somewhere along the line, a few years ago, I think we talked about getting downtown up and moving. Get it lively. Get mixed, mixed-use down there. That's what I was looking for. But guess what? Doesn't stand a prayer. So think about it. Think about it. You know, bolt this down. I, Counsel Robie, I got to congratulate you. You did a wonderful job. This, these conditions, these amendments are good. I mentioned last week, see, parking doesn't scare me like it scares you guys. You know, I was in Boston yesterday. I was down at Chart House. You obviously the traffic around the aquarium, you know, the Chart House and those places. Of course, they, they solved the problem with valet parking. You know, for $7, I just dropped my car and they took my keys and that was wonderful. Now, I'm not sure if some of these residents downtown would have valet parking. But we, we have to, forget us, move forward. All right? I mentioned some of the things, you know, last week when it comes to parking. And I'm not saying Belmont and Cambridge and Watertown, the greatest one. But you got to look at your overall parking situation. You know, you're scared about the winter. What do you do with the winter? You know, you're scared about the winter, what do you do with the winter? Well, I had mentioned at the time, even odd, you know, during the winter, you know, on the even days of the month, you park on the even side, all right? You know, could some of these streets be diagonal parking? You know, at one time, up by IC Church, we used to have diagonal parking there, you know? Have we really looked at, you know, the parking situation the way we should? Getting back to Council Robie again, she spent a lot of time on this document here, and she put a lot of thought there. Have we done the same thing about parking? It doesn't scare me too much. I mean, I don't want to bring parking meters and that stuff back, but, you know, there is, if I recall, there is enough parking places downtown, you know, from Monument, from Monument Square, you know, down to East Main Street. There's enough parking there, but, you know, we've spoiled ourselves, you know? We, we pull up and, you know, leave our car, we go in the city hall, you know, it's, it's kind of nice. But if we want to get something going downtown, all right, we got to be a little more creative than we've been. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Landers. Is there any other discussion from the Council Wagner?
Thank you. I know Boston gets brought up a lot, but I think of Framingham when we think of parking, and it is a solvable problem, and maybe this isn't the right project at this time, but this is always going to come up. I've been hearing this conversation for the 30 years I lived in Marlboro. When the two garages went up, we said, oh, we really need a third, this isn't quite enough. Have we done anything in the last 30 years to build, to move towards a new parking garage or to address this? Not that I'm aware of. And, and some of the letters have talked about, we, oh, we're putting this building in just to get a few thousand dollars. Well, we'd be half a million dollars closer to a garage, and if we use the 30G's figure, Council Orham, throughout, we're talking about $6 million to build another 200-space garage in the downtown area. Well, this, again, moves half a million dollars closer to that. This is moving in that direction. In Framingham, they don't play. You do not park in a parking lot and then take the train, there are designated places to take the commuter rail. There used to be a place called The Fabric Store, and they hired a kid, they would watch you. If you didn't walk into The Fabric Store, they told you. And that, to address that bill, that, because they only had so much parking for that business, and it was a really popular business, and they didn't play. And these are some, some of these things to think about. If we have businesses that have limited spaces, well, they can make, there's ways to make sure that people that aren't supposed to park there are parking there. If the Bolton Street place is off-limits and safety, we can address that. Are we going to work together? Are we going to work with businesses and make sure we have the employees filling the jobs that are available in the city? Can we work with safety and make sure traffic's addressed? Can we work with all the different factors? Businesses, the people who live here already, the people who are coming in, these are solvable problems that require creativity and thinking about things differently. But if we keep approaching the, the problem with 1970s thinking, this is not going to change. If everyone's going to, we, everyone with a big Buick needs a big parking space to come in, we, then let's just build, have a moratorium, we're not going to touch downtown, it has to stay as is. I think we can do this. I think, I appreciate what Council Landis said, I think we need to think creatively about this and get out of this rot we've been stuck in for several decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wagner. Are there any other discussions on the amendment? Any other discussions? So a yes vote is to support the amendment. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please stand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, in favor, two opposed. The amendment carries. Council Robie?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm going to move the recommendation of committee, which was to approve the site plan, it's now as amended.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the site plan as amended. Any discussion on the motion? Council Orham?
Just to be very careful, should we not rewrite the actual amendment within the order? So that way, we're voting, so there's not a separate piece of paper from it. I mean, we know what we're doing, maybe this should be as presented at the city council meeting on April 10th, 2023. I just want to make sure this paper doesn't get lost.
Today is April 10th, 2023.
Yes, and that's when this was presented.
Yep.
I'm just wondering if that, this document should be incorporated into this document, the original document.
Council Robie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if anybody turned to the second page of this, where I had asked, because it was a concern, that if this was approved, would it have to go back to the solicitor to be put in proper form? The opening sentence in here is from Solicitor Grossfield, "I've incorporated my suggested edits as to legal form. Please note, any conditions are subject to reasonable conditions requirements for this site plan." He has this document, he was the one who put it in proper form. He will simply amend the site plan with what is in this language, once approved, if approved.
Thank you, Council Robie. Okay, Council Orham?
Yes, I'm just being careful.
Any other discussion? Council Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So this gets to the real meat of the situation, as far as actually approving or on the, the site plan of this. I do have serious concerns, if it does not get approved, that it will slow down development downtown. We do a lot of development, there's a lot of development going on throughout the city. On the eastern side of town, we have the development on Boston Post Road, the McGee Farm, that's been delayed, but it's going to get done. And then also, the E projects on Semirano Drive. But I'm concerned with how the downtown is, you know, we're, we're getting these project proposals, they clear the lot, and then it stays cleared for years, okay? Many years ago, Digital Equipment Corporation had a chip fab facility in Hudson. It was a state-of-the-art Class V chip fab facility. Intel bought it, Intel ran it for a couple of years. The Centrino processor back in the day was developed in Hudson. When they, when Intel decided to walk away, they leveled the building. They eliminated the Class V clean room facility, state-of-the-art, because they didn't want to pay taxes on it, okay? And my concern is, they take this, you know, building that's there, they level it, and they have to pay less taxes on it, because they don't know what to do with it going forward. I'm concerned of that, for downtown, the image of downtown. I want to make sure that, you know, we work to revitalize downtown, we make it better, parking is a critical part of that. And I think this proposal showed where we fell short, and we need to address that, okay? We really need to address how we want to address overnight parking downtown. There has to be some sort of system set up, maybe with stickers or something, where people can buy parking for overtime in certain locations, you know, and do it that way. And that would help alleviate this development as well as others. I think that if this doesn't get passed, it's just going to, we're going to end up with a lot of empty halls in downtown for many, many years, and I'm very concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Any other councillors wish to comment? Hearing none, so that you all know what you're voting on. You're voting on to approve the site plan as amended. Everybody's clear?
Mr. President?
Council Robie?
I know it is only a site plan, but I would ask that there be a roll call vote, please.
That's fine, you can ask for that anytime. Everybody good? Okay, so a positive vote is to approve the site plan as amended. I'll ask the clerk to please read the roll, please. Council Landers?
Yes.
Council Dumas is abstaining. Council Irish?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Wagner?
Yes.
Council Ossing?
No.
Council Robie?
Yes.
Council Navin?
No.
Council Pearlman?
No.
Council Orham?
Yes.
And Council Dusset? Seven in favor, three opposed. The amended site plan is approved by a vote of seven in favor, three opposed. Council Dumas?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, if I may, before he does his clearing us, I just want to take the opportunity to remind the public that on Earth Day, April 24th, the city is having its clean sweep. If you don't have time to go to DPW to pick up a bag, at least grab a garbage bag from your own house and clean up in front of your house or your block. Please.
The 20-second, not the 24.
I'm sorry, the 20-second. 24's on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Robie.